Good evening and welcome to council chambers. It is Monday, June 25th, just after 7:00 PM. And we're here for our town council meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our...
Roll call please. Counselor O'Clair?
Present.
Counselor Carrasco?
Present.
Counselor Clemmons?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Present.
Counselor Manna?
Present.
Counselor Morales?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Eight present. Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the special town council meeting minutes of June 11th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Corrections. Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you to Counselor Nash. Noticed on my section on the Citizens Forum, I don't remember what I saw.
The agenda says special town council. We're actually taking up the regular town council meetings.
But it was, right. It was a, no, it was a special. We called it an extra June 11th meeting. We had a June 4th and today's. And June 11th was considered a special town council meeting because it was in addition to our others.
We should probably just label it as such then.
Continue Counselor Morales. You have a correction under Counselors' forum.
Counselor Morales said he has seen. I just don't remember what I stated.
Yeah, I updated it, but it's not on here. I haven't.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? None. Great. All those in favor? Did you have a seat?
I was there.
You were here on that?
Yeah.
Sorry. Wrong me. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along to agenda item number four, Subcommittee summaries, relevant minutes to be read at each agenda item. 4A is general government.
Yeah, we did have a meeting on, we had a meeting on June 13th. And let's see, we addressed, unfortunately, I have not had a chance to type up the minutes yet, but let's see, we talked about, if I can read my own scroll here. Yeah, we, okay, let's see, we talked about a, I'm sorry, I can't even read my own scroll right now. Municipal Modernization Act, we talked about that for a little while. We talked about a couple of assets, KVS system issues. Let's see, we talked about our credit rating stuff and the management letter. We did discuss the audit recently. Most of this was on the audit discussion, which really didn't, it wasn't, it was just for information's sake. It wasn't intended to be an agenda item, as in coming forward or anything. I haven't had a chance to type them up, so I will get to them as soon as I can. I do not have any meetings scheduled at the moment.
Thank you. 4B, Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Meeting was held on June 19th with 19 agenda items related to transfer or appropriation of funds for various Department of Public Works and sewer plant projects. The majority of these items are on tonight's council agenda. Although Subcommittee members were very diligent in getting all their questions answered prior to a majority decision to recommend these to council, I would advise council to further question Heather and the Town Manager, any questions they have regarding these items as a total almost $1 million.
Very good. Thank you. 4C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a very brief meeting of the Education and Human Services Subcommittee. I'm looking at my phone for the date. I thought it was the 13th, but I want to be correct on that. In any case, during that meeting, we approved the previous meeting's minutes, but there was no action taken on an agenda item related to the transfer of funds within the Recreation Department for repurposing and relative to a fence. So that is an item that will have to come forward. I did speak with the Recreation Director to let him know that we need him present at the meeting to answer questions of the council and the committee. At this time, that meeting has not as yet been scheduled. Thank you. Was it 20? Thank you, that was on the 20th.
4D, Planning and Development, Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. We did have a meeting on June 20th. It was a brief meeting. And it was to discuss agenda item 32 and 33. So I'm sure that we will discuss the meeting when we get to those two items. And I do not have any other meetings scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. 4E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I did have a meeting on June 13th. There are three appointments that are on the agenda tonight, one for Constable, one for a promotion in the Police Department, and one to hire a firefighter. We also discussed somewhat the, I don't have my minutes prepared yet, so I'm just going off the notes, so I apologize. We did discuss some under new business in regards to how dispatch was, the dispatch station was moving forward and whatnot. So I should have the minutes available completed hopefully by next week. Thank you. Oh, there's no meetings planned at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Agenda item five is Chairman's announcements, and we have a few. So I had the pleasure of being at the Cops and Kids fundraiser on Friday, the 22nd. They had a wonderful golf tournament, their third annual, over at the Heritage Golf Course in Charlton. And what a great outpouring. I just can't express enough how wonderful it was to see so many people come out, so many community members, so many donations from businesses to continue to support this worthy, worthy cause. You know, Officer Rose has started this many moons ago, and it continues now with the good deeds of our police officers and the many others who make sure that the kids have free camp in the summertime. And I just can't say enough about it. So important is it that DA Early paid a visit to the event. His comments were to the point that this is the program that the kids need. This is what keeps these kids motivated to stay out of trouble and to move forward and to be, to grow and to form that relationship with the police. They dropped off a $2,500 check, so that was pretty good. It just shows you how committed even they are to this program continuing, much to the success of our Deputy Chief Dinghy, who is trying to pass it down and get his other officers involved. But everybody, from Chief Woodson was there golfing. And we could not, this could not happen for the youth of this community if it wasn't for the commitment that these officers have done over all these years. So applaud you, continue to support you, and look forward to many, many more years doing good deeds for the youth of our community. The next thing I want to mention is cemetery signs. This has been a little bit of a dilemma for some. The issue of the Oak Ridge Cemetery was brought up a number of months ago by a citizen and the fact that there were so many different types of decorations and some of them spilling over into others' sites. And we have a cemetery policy which was brought to light again, and people were very concerned about that. But one of the things that was brought up was perhaps sometimes culturally or other ways, otherwise, people aren't aware of what goes on. And our DPW did a great job with getting some signage made. They're small and orange, laminated, and they're attached to the wooden board that is at the entrance to Oak Ridge Cemetery. And it was Counselor Morales who brought it to my attention and said, is this all we have for the signage? Because it's very small and it still can be a problem. So people were finding that perhaps the decorations had been removed from the grave sites and nothing intentional or nothing to cite anyone in particular out, but there is a policy and we can't maintain the beauty and the awe for everybody at that cemetery if the excess is excess. So when Counselor Morales brought it to my attention too, we started looking at the idea of more permanent signs. And we know that that's a bit of a problem, you know, money's something here. So I spoke with the DPW Director and asked if signs were donated, would they be able to mount them at the cemetery? Of course, we would want them both in English and in Spanish. And so again, I spoke with Counselor Morales. We were talking about getting this up and running. And with the help of Center of Hope, they're going to be printing the signs for us that were approved size-wise. They'll be about a two-by-three sign, and they'll be permanently mounted, again, one in English, one in Spanish, and in nice aesthetically green lettering and such, so that people will see the signs and be able to understand why. And they will also be able to go to the website, it'll be listed there, or call the DPW or the Town Hall to get more information as to why their items might be missing. So I just want to, hopefully, the council will accept the donation. When it comes through, we'll bring the signs to you, but it will be at no cost to the town. And I just wanted to make sure something good was done and work with Counselor Morales on this. So hopefully, that will be okay with all of you to accept our donation in the next week or two when the signs are finished. And cemetery. So speaking of finish, I just take a few minutes, again, sorry to be long. I know we have people waiting here, but it's been nine years, and tonight is my last, my last council meeting. And I just want to thank you all for giving me the privilege to serve you for the past nine years. It has been an honor and it has been an education to learn so much about our community, even when you've been here at the time, 20, 22 years of straight living. You know, I was born here, but I didn't live all my life here. So you think you know a lot about the town, but the last nine years has taught me a lot more. The wonderful people that I've worked with, the issues that we face, that we still face, some have been resolved, many are not. And the support that has been given over those nine years. I can't thank you enough for allowing me to be here. My council members that have supported me and been part, those who are gone, who I respect greatly, and those who are still here that will carry on, thank you so much. It would not have been possible without my family, and I do have to thank them immensely. I have five children, some of you may not know that. And when I started, my youngest was still in school. So I have seen numerous graduations, both high school and college. I've gone through deaths and births of grandchildren and so many, many other milestones. Aniversaries missed, birthdays missed. Gladly, my family has tolerated all of that for nine years. They're looking forward to having me back. So thank you. Love all you, my family. And I couldn't have done this without you or your understanding. So I thank my family and I thank all of you. And I only wish good things for Southbridge. I believe Southbridge is a wonderful place. I look forward to living out all my years here in Southbridge with my family, not going anywhere. So thank you all. Okay. We have a long agenda, so Counselor Sees, you have a hand?
I'll keep it very brief. First of all, two things. One is that I wanted to say thank you for all that I've learned from you. And I remember when I interviewed you, for the first time you ran on the newspaper, we sat down in Elm Center Cafe and had lunch and interviewed you there. And it's interesting to see how much, how much you have changed and how much you haven't changed since then. And it's, it's been interesting and fun working with you. Thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you for being a great host, Chair.
And I wanted to read this. Ed Moore sent a letter over saying that he would like to be read to you. He wasn't able to attend tonight. He says, "Dear Council Members, I'd like to share with the council and the community as a whole that Denise Clemmons, who has been Town Council for nine years, three of those as Vice Chair and Chair for the last year, has been a tremendous supporter of Harrington Healthcare. She has truly gone out of her way to attend many events that the hospital has sponsored and has spoken very favorably of our initiatives, both in the local community as well as at the State House. Denise has worked closely with local health officials to pursue efforts that have benefited Harrington over the past several years relative to grant funding and support for behavioral health and substance abuse services. She was a strong advocate to have a significant water issue resolved when we were expanding further into Charlton and help the town find a solution so that we could open our building on time to help serve a broader community. She's truly recognized the value that a strong local hospital brings to the community, both in quality of care and economic benefit. She and her family have been very generous in their philanthropic support of the renovation of our Southbridge Emergency Room and other projects in the past. This project will start in just a few weeks and will fully upgrade the ER to a state-of-the-art facility. She has been influential in having state and local officials attend major events this summer, July 14th, at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, to support the newly renovated ER. Denise has gone above and beyond in finding ways to create the right type of partnership between the town and the largest employer in the area. That partnership has allowed for a large number of people from Southbridge to be employed at the hospital. In addition, she has spearheaded an effort to help us partner with the Southbridge PD and participate in procuring a new canine dog to help with the opioid crisis. She has also encouraged Harrington to get more involved with Cops and Kids. I just wanted to share some thoughts for the council and congratulate Denise on successfully completing her tenure on the council. This type of community service is a remarkable commitment and achievement, and signed by Ed Moore, President and CEO of Harrington."
Okay. So let's move on, because we have a lot going on and a lot of people who want to get this meeting over with and have a good time and celebrate their successes. Town Manager's announcements, Mr. Sanangelo, please.
Well, thank you. First of all, you know, we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to work with the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief. We are currently in the process of promoting one of our firemen to the office of, or to the rank of Lieutenant. They went through an assessment center, and now they've all gone through interviews. And we're in the middle right now of tallying the scores for all those different candidates. But I have to say, I was tremendously impressed with the quality of officers within our Fire Department. Every one of them did a great job in the process of being interviewed, understand what needs to happen in this community as it relates to fire services. But more importantly, what I, what I heard from each of them is their heart and how much they love this community and the dedication that our firemen on a regular basis go to improve our department in a variety of different ways. So I don't know who's going to be the one that finally achieves the rank of Lieutenant, but I got to tell you, every one of you should be proud for the work you've done on behalf of our town. So I wanted to publicly say that and thank them for their efforts. As the council knows, we're in the process of hiring two new dispatchers for July 1st, and I had the opportunity to interview some candidates for that position as well today, and we'll be deciding on that shortly. You can expect that that's going to occur soon. We want them to be in place for July 1st as we begin this new process. I think that's going to increase the safety of the citizens in town when they get through the dispatch, we're going to have more coverage, and I think that's also crucial. I was also impressed with the candidates that we had, who had a lot of knowledge in this area and I think will be real assets for our community as well. I also had the opportunity to attend a Cops and Kids event with the Chairwoman, along with Counselors Nash and, with our new Counselor, David Adams. I also want to give special thanks to Rob Cabrera, the Town Attorney, and this is a little bit of an odd thing, but I want to thank him for keeping our team alive. We were really terrible without him, so I wanted to thank him for being there, supporting us, and actually helping our team in that. Jose Dinghy, our Deputy Fire Chief, is sort of the leader of Cops and Kids, and his team did a phenomenal job. Always, Jose comes up to the plate when it's talking about how we can help children in our community, particularly those children that need the most help. So I think he's in the back of the room here, but Jose, I wanted to thank you for your efforts, and I can't tell you how much it's appreciated, not only your work with Cops and Kids, but your work with children and trying to keep children safe from illegal drugs, and your overall professionalism as you run the Police Department as well. I also, I know she doesn't like it because she's trying to stop it, but I do want to recognize the work of our Council Chairwoman, who spent nine years on this Town Council. And having gone through that process, you got to know how hard that is, the time you spend away from family and friends, and how many dinners you miss and things you miss because you have a commitment to your hometown. She's put in tremendous amount of work. I particularly love what she does on the Christmas stuff. I know it's sort of not the key kind of thing to Town Council, but it shows heart, it shows caring, and whenever you do something that makes the lives of children a little bit nicer, it's always a plus for me. And I particularly enjoy watching all the work that she does in making the children's lives a little bit brighter in town. I do want to talk about Chairman, or former Chairman, Counselor Carrasco as well. He's one of the men in town that I've come to have a great deal of respect for. And I watched a lot of, there's no other way to say it, it's a lot of political nonsense through campaigns. This is a man of true character. He's demonstrated every day I've worked with him. We had some severe disagreements on particular issues through Town Council, but after those disagreements, I was always treated with respect and dignity. And we worked together, and he did what was in the best interest of the town. I also saw him, you know, like Counselor Clemmons, when it comes to helping children and families, it's amazing. We had a number of fires in town, and I watched him go out and collect clothing and raise money and do a lot of things for the families, people who needed it most in those fires. Mr. Carrasco, I find you a man of respect. It was an honor to work with you through your time on the Town Council. I wish you both tremendous success into the future and know that you guys have been an asset to this community, and thank you both for that. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Chairwoman.
Very good. Moving on. Agenda item number seven is a presentation. Tonight, we have in our midst another retiree, this one here, 30 years of service in the police side of safety. And that is for Sergeant Michael P. Sullivan. And if he would join us at the podium. Well, it was good to see you at Cops and Kids as well, another big supporter. So this has been the funnest part of my job this year is being able to recognize people for their great works. And yours speaks for itself, 27 years here with Southbridge. And I don't know how we survive without you. How will we survive without you? A lot of slack to pick up. So we have a commendation for you here. Presented to Sergeant Michael P. Sullivan, resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas from September 18th, 1990 to July 5th, 2018, Sergeant Michael Sullivan has provided commendable full-time police service to the Town of Southbridge and its citizens for 27 years. Whereas Sergeant Sullivan began his law enforcement career in Southbridge on September 18th, 1990, as a lateral transfer from the Charlton PD, in 1993, he was promoted to detective and moved between patrol officer and detective assignments for 12 years, working as a detective throughout his career. Whereas in 2011, Sergeant Sullivan received the Tri-Community Exchange Club Officer of the Year Award for his detective work, specifically for his work investigating sexual assaults that involve children. On November 20th, 2012, Sergeant Sullivan, Sully, was promoted to the rank of Sergeant and has served the Southbridge community in this capacity since that time. Now therefore, on behalf of the Southbridge Town Council, I do hereby confer upon Sergeant Sullivan its commendation for 27 years of service and manner in which he has performed his duties as a member of the Southbridge Police Department in witness thereof this 25th day of June 2018. Signed by myself. And now we're going to have our Chief of Police, Shane Woodson, come up and also present something to our wonderful Sully.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Town Manager, members of the council, Denise basically had said everything that I was going to say tonight, so that's basically Mike Sullivan's whole career. But it's pretty important to remember, most of this man's career, he devoted to serving the children in our community who were hurt in a, you know, where you can't even possibly imagine. So I know there's a lot of victims of sexual assaults, a lot of their parents tonight, who I've spoken with over the last several months, and they found out Mike was retiring, and they wished him well. You know, he's a great man for handling all those cases for us, and our department's going to miss him. So with that said, I know, you know, we had to force him to come here tonight because he doesn't like recognition, but when you do great things, sometimes you have to be recognized for it. So with that said, a plaque for Sergeant Sullivan, just in grateful appreciation of your more than 27 years of dedicated service to the community of Southbridge and the Southbridge Police Department. Congratulations on your retirement, signed by me. So congrats, Mike.
I never liked going to court and talking in front of people, so really quickly, I'm very proud to have served for the Southbridge Police Department. Couldn't be more proud. From the day I started till the day I stopped, every person that I worked with there, I learned something from, from the oldest guys to the guys just getting out of the academy, guys and girls. Very proud to have worked for the Town of Southbridge and the Southbridge PD. You have a great police department. Thank you very much. Thank you.
If I, if I could, Madam Chair, just one thing. And just quickly, while I'm standing here, and I was just talking with Deputy Chief Dinghy, since we've been talking about the Cops and Kids program, and I realize you have a very busy agenda. But I just, I want to recognize the Chairwoman, because I think it's important that everybody knows and the community knows, and I know she doesn't want me to do this either, but she was instrumental in the Cops and Kids program over the last nine years. In fact, she was the first person who pushed fundraising and made a lot of people donate a lot of money. And Jose and I, just doing the math in the back a few minutes ago, it's come up to about $300,000 she's generated in the last nine years for this community, fundraising, other companies, her private accounts and things like that, that a lot of people don't know. And that's a lot of money. And just remember, the whole program is run essentially on fundraising. Not $1 of that comes out of the town money or from the taxpayers. So I just think we should just, I wanted to acknowledge the Chair myself tonight, standing here. Congratulations and thank you.
It would not be fair to not mention Counselor Manna, who pushed me originally with the Cops and Kids program. And together, we started the efforts to keep it going so that it wouldn't go away. So thank you, Counselor Manna, for that.
Thank you, Counselor Collins.
I'm going to ask if council would possibly take nine out of order before Citizens Forum, because it is a, is a really great occasion to be able to support the, I can't even think, ah, just lost my train of thought. Sorry. The promotion, that's the word, I'm sorry, the promotion of a police officer. Actually, good suggestion, Counselor Carrasco. We will take nine and 10 if it so pleases the rest of the council before Citizens Forum, because we have a wonderful group here, and I'm sure they would prefer to be somewhere else after we do this. All right, so we'll just do that as a, all right. So Agenda item number nine is vote to confirm the Police Chief's recommendation to appoint Louis M. Torres of Southbridge as permanent full-time police sergeant for the Town of Southbridge.
So moved.
Second.
Chief.
If I could again, good evening. This essentially Officer Torres, who stands here before you tonight, is a replacement for Sergeant Sullivan, who's retiring, as we all know. This would be effective, I was hoping July 1st, but effective immediately according to the agenda. Just to give you a little bit of background about Officer Torres here, he has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice and Spanish. He's been with our PD a little bit over six years now. He's a local resident, lives here in town. He's been our School Resource Officer for the last three years, and I've gotten more heat from the schools about removing him that you have no idea. They loved him up there, he did a great job, he's a true professional, credit to our profession. He's got an impeccable service record, he's bilingual, he was second on the Sergeant's exam, Sergeant Salisbury was first, and he was promoted a few months ago, so Louis Torres now stands at number one. I think he's a great asset to the department, he's the future of the department, and I highly recommend the promotion to Sergeant.
Anyone have anything? Well then, all those in favor. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Vote to the Fire Chief's recommendation to appoint Timothy Pluff of Spencer, Mass. as a permanent full-time firefighter paramedic for the Town of Southbridge pending medical clearance and successful completion of Massachusetts Physical Abilities Test, known as the PAT. clearance and successful completion of Massachusetts Physical Abilities Test, known as the PAT.
Second.
Chief.
Good evening all, thank you, Madam Chair. It's with great pleasure that I recommend Timothy Pluff for the position of firefighter paramedic. During our hiring process, he displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition. He obtained his paramedic certification while serving in the National Guards. He received reciprocity here to work in the state of Massachusetts, so he has all the credentials necessary to work here in the state of Massachusetts as a paramedic. While he spent time in the National Guards, he also received additional advanced level of training as a critical care paramedic. Now, while we don't offer that service in our agency, it certainly shows that Mr. Pluff is not shy when it comes to wanting to be better at his profession, so we're excited to have him with our department. He's recently returned home from being deployed through the National Guards, where he's used his paramedic skills to assist fellow guard members as well as citizens of the area that he was deployed in. He also has experience working in an emergency room at UMass Memorial as an ER/ICU technician. And I'm sure Mr. Pluff has some unfortunate stories of those people that have had to use those facilities in those hospitals. So, a complete background check was done with the Southbridge Police Department, no issues or findings were noted, and this candidate has been vetted through subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and I'm asking for a favorable vote this evening to put Mr. Pluff on my department as a firefighter paramedic.
Any discussion on this candidate? Mr. Town Manager.
You know, just want to make a brief comment here. First of all, you know, you get to interview a lot of people in my position, and I just want to say what a great job you did in the interview process. I think your skills as a paramedic are going to be really helpful at the time, right out of the box, so it's nice to see you're going to be able to come in and be a true asset from the day you start. And I want to thank you for applying here and for coming to be one of our firemen. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Congratulations. At this time, we're now going to take Citizens Forum as agenda item number 10. If there's anyone who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, you may approach the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak on something that is not on the podium, not on the agenda.
I'm just here this evening to thank Counselor Clements for her work the last nine, 10 years on the Festival of Lights. We started that with the fire department probably 15, 20 years ago, and then when I retired, she moved in and kept it going. Her tenacity on getting things done is really well-known. She made sure that come the end of October, my phone, I should have hidden it somewhere because it kept ringing. Got to get to the lights, got to get to the lights, got to make sure this is working, got to get the tree on Main Street done. But she always carried on for the residents of Southbridge, the children of Southbridge especially, making sure that Christmas was special for them. A lot of hard work. I saw her out there on cold days, snowy days, setting up a lot of displays, making sure that the merchants participated with various cookies and hot chocolate and things like that for the kids. So, hopefully, we can continue this tradition that we've started at the town common many years ago. And just another side note on the Cops and Kids golf tournament, I participated Friday. Just the bags alone, that I understood that you had a line or trying to set up, fill up all those bags, it was really quite something to see. I play a lot of tournaments, that's one of the better bags you get for participating. So, thank you for your years of service for the community, thank you for what you do, especially for the kids and the citizens of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We have to give credit where it's due, Chief. Without you, the lights would not be lit. And I know Rudy's watching down and saying, Lenny, you got to get some more lights up this year, so don't take your phone off the hook. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council with anything that's not on the Okay. Seeing none, we're going to keep moving along here and hopefully get everybody out in a timely manner tonight. Agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the appointment of Bradford Angers as constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Agenda item 12. Vote to confirm the appointment of Michael Loyn to the planning board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, a question, I think Mr. Loyn's currently an alternate member, is this a full appointment? I didn't see any paperwork on it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is Mr. Loyn being appointed to a full spot on the planning board or once again as an alternate?
It says it's a three-year.
He was an alternate, I think he moved up.
Mr. Comby, do you want to fill us in?
Yeah. Thank you. We currently have a vacancy with the resignation of Cheryl Majazic, so he would be ticking her term come July 1st.
Who's resigning?
Cheryl Majazic resigned from the planning board.
Wasn't she just appointed?
No, she's been here quite a while.
Oh, she's been here quite a while, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, answers?
Yep.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 13. Vote to confirm the reappointment of John Brackett to the Southbridge Airport Commission for three-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. I'm going to take items if it's okay with everybody. Item 14, 15, 16, and 17, they are all confirmations for auxiliary police officers. I will read each name within the motion. Is that acceptable to all?
Yes.
Okay. So, vote to confirm the reappointment of John Calgany, Jose De Liam, Jacob Gardner, and Hector Melendez as auxiliary police officers for the town of Southbridge for three-year terms effectively, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any questions about any of these appointments, any reservations? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion, so 14, 15, 16, and 17. Agenda item 18. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as animal control officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Manna.
I should have asked this before the meeting, I should have contacted somebody. We just appointed her, so is this like every year?
Every year. We do this every year.
Because I don't recall, I always thought Anna Smith was like every couple of years.
Yeah, every year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All, oops, Counselor Steve.
I know that she's going through training, do you know when she's going to finish that?
No, it's a continuous training effort, Counselor Steve, but I don't know exactly when she's finishing it. So, please, Chief, he's left. If he comes back, I'll try to get you to answer for that.
Okay, it's not a big deal, I'll just chair.
Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda 19. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as parking enforcement officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Agenda item 20. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Colin Mocklaw as fire auxiliary for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda items 21, 22, and 23 are all for reappointments as call firefighters. I will be reading them all together. Okay. Vote to confirm the reappointments of Dylan Langley, Ian Haggerty, and Nicholas Cantara as call firefighters for a three-year term each effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, motions carry. Please, Mr. Chief Woodson, would you like to come up?
I apologize, we were outside.
Oh, no, that's okay.
The issue with Animal Control Officer Spencer, the academy, I wasn't in here, I didn't hear the conversation, but after speaking with the town manager, she just completed last Friday, she just graduated from the Animal Control Academy. Per state law, they can work as animal control officer for a municipality, but within, I think it's either a year or 18 months of them being employed by us, they have to attend that academy and complete it, and she just finished it.
Okay, cool.
Very extensive, every Friday for like eight weeks, it's pretty extensive training. So, she's complete.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Agenda item 24. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Beth Canoyer to the Board of Library Trustees for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Agenda item 25 and 26 are the cultural council. So, we'll take them. Vote to confirm the reappointments of Brendan Venick and Therto Bartlett, better known as Ted, to the Southbridge Cultural Council, each for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's, motion carries, it's unanimous. I want to thank Ted Bartlett also, he's been a great supporter, the cultural council in itself, to support our Christmas efforts, and they've offered again this year, so very, very fortunate here in the community. Agenda item 27. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Michelle Reese to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 28. Vote to recommend that the council request the Board of Health research the matter of potential dumpster regulations.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? This was, yeah, Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just very quickly, I appreciate the chair brought this to EHS, and we did vet it through subcommittee. A lot of good discussion was had a few weeks ago about the matter. It is something that I'm glad see, seeing that the council is making the referral so that we can bear a little bit of the burden and the Board of Health doesn't have to look like the bad guy in a particular circumstance. So, thank you very much for the discussion. And if people didn't see, it was included in the minutes that were approved a couple of weeks ago. All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, go forth, make us some dumpster regulations. Maybe. You can recommend it, yes. Agenda item 29. Vote to accept a grant for Mass DOT in the amount of $81,792.80 for the purchase of a John Deere Loader 333G and attachments as identified in our capital plan FY19.
Second.
Okay, discussion? This is the airport item? I don't know if, do you want to mention anything or? It was capital.
It was, it was capital.
It's an 80/20 split?
Yeah, and we remember we talked about it.
The funds were available for this year, it was in the capital plan for next year, but the funds have to be expended by June 30th, and that's why it's on the agenda at this moment. Close?
Pretty close, yeah.
All right. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 30. Vote to accept the Mass DOT grant amendment to the airport fencing project in the amount of $14,225, increasing the grant amount from $150,000 to $164,225.
Second.
Discussion on this?
Anytime the state's going to give us more money than they're already giving us, I have no problem with that.
Right, so this is not additional cost to us. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 31. Vote that the council accept the, oh, well, I will, I will ask the chair, the vice chair to please continue with this item.
Vote that the council accept the proposal in purchase price of $87,000 submitted by Richard Clements for town-owned property at 70 Foster Street as per the review committee's recommendation.
Second.
Second, okay. Ryan?
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Vice Chairman, this is something that this committee as a whole, this group as a whole, has been talking about for quite some time. This is what is referred to as the old Warder Company building on Foster Street. The building has been sitting unoccupied for quite some time and deteriorating. We did make an effort to clean it all up and get it ready for sale. It went through the normal procurement process under 30EB. We exercised a group of people to evaluate the request for proposals. That group of people consisted of myself, our town finance director Karen Harnoy, our economic development director Rosemary Scrivens, the CDBG coordinator Rose Canoyer, and our town assessor Will Canoyer. There were two projects that were proposed. Both of them were very good products, and the end result literally was a score of one-point difference between the two particular projects. I am recommending that the proposal given to us by Richard M. Clements be moved forward for sale of the property for the amount as was read in the motion. The positive thing, and I think what really made this project, the project that moves forward, was the fact that it be crates what now is currently a non-taxable property owned by the town, puts its backs on our tax rolls, and makes it a taxable property for our town. So, you're going to see private investment into that particular project. And I think that that was pretty much what put this project slightly over the top, was the fact that the town could use every bit of taxes it can, it can get. The process was done fairly by frankly, kind of a part of my leadership team, I think they did a great job, and I think this is a solid recommendation to the town council. We're asking of you is to approve the sale of this property, and then we'll take care of all required paperwork as part of that file. But the bidder did meet all the requirements of the actual request for proposals.
And I also just wanted to add that the proposal in front of us calls for creating new housing. It's going to be kind of, it's going to be a little, a little above average as far as rents go in our town, but it looks like it'd be interesting, and it looks like it's a good use of a space that's been sitting there vacant and slowly deteriorating for a very long time, so it's nice to see it getting used. Are there any questions or comments, Monique?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Steve. I just want to say, when I heard about this and read about it, I was just so excited that this building is going to be turned into the living quarters that they're proposing, taking this like old mill, if you want to put it that way, building. This is what you see in Worcester, it's what you see in Boston, this is what you see in Old Millbury and Old Clinton and all the, and I think it's just marvelous for this to be happening right here in Southbridge too. And I would really, really love to see more of this, and I'm going to support this 100%. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Madam. That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's okay. Mr. Vice Chairman, we did have lengthy discussion in subcommittee on this as well, and it was quite enlightening, and I agree with Counselor Manna that this is an exciting opportunity for the town to see this turn into something really, really great, so I'm in support of it as well. Thank you.
I just want to add that I think it's nice to see that after it's gone around a couple of times in RFP process, and it's been sitting and lingering for years, it's finally getting done. That's great. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor? And Epstein?
Epstein, sorry.
Gavel back to you, Minister.
Agenda item 32. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and GCG Associates for independent peer review services under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G, in the amount of $2,880 for special permit site plan of AC ground-mounted photovoltaic solar energy on properties located off Dresser Hill Road to be funded from purchases of services outside consultant's planning account.
Second.
Okay. Do you want, any discussion or? This is a peer review, this doesn't cost the town any money, this is monies that are given by the developer to, and we can require peer review. So, this is what this money, it's a pass-through basically. Okay, councilors?
Just to clarify a little bit, to explain a little bit, what they're talking about here is taking a look at a couple of solar projects that are off of Dresser Hill, there's a whole bunch of them going up, going up there, being proposed by ZPT Solar, about to take a look at the impacts of, I think it's primarily stormwater issues, probably a couple of other things going on there. And just to, so you might want to keep tabs on what's going on up there, because there's actually several solar projects that are being, being proposed for the area between the high school and Dresser Hill Road and right, right beyond it. So, just keep your eyes open and see what's going on.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 33. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Van Ness and Associates, Inc. for independent peer review services under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G, up to an amount of $4,750 for a traffic study review for a project named Southbridge Mills located at 5 to 15 K Street to be funded from purchase of services outside consultant's planning account.
Second.
Again, same idea, it's for a different project, obviously not solar, however, again, it's peer review, and it's something that the Planning Board can request to be taken care of. Any other discussion on this item?
I can just explain that a little bit, too, just for, for those who are curious, that that's the 40B project that's being proposed on the very first building, as you go into the, the southern entrance of the AO complex. And they're looking, from what I understand, from the previous meetings, that they're looking at concerns about that intersection there, and people crossing from the parking lot over there, and a few other related issues that I know people have raised concerns about at previous zoning board meetings, so if anybody's curious about that, that's actually in front of the zoning board, not the planning board.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 34, vote to approve a transfer of $20,000 to Streetlights Account Number 741 for 15,000, oh, excuse me, that's, from Streetlights Account 741, $15,000 from Heating Fuel Account Number 736, and $5,000 from Reserve for Property Repair Maintenance and Demolition Number 746 to cover invoices from May through June of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, do you have something? Oh, planning and development, right, do you want to? That was just DPW.
Yeah, that's, uh, we didn't do that.
You're good, okay. Counselor Manah, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I do have a question on the $15,000 from the heat, heating fuel account, is that the special account that was set up for fuel assistance for the community way back when, or what is this account?
No. No, it is not. It is not, Counselor Manah.
Okay, well.
It's excess, excess, excess in that heating and fuel week, over.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's definitely not.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor DePetro, do you have something? Use your hand up a minute.
Oh, I did, Madam Chair. For those who weren't able to attend that particular Subcommittee, this figure is down from $300,000 for the purchase of a brand-new machine.
Huh?
Unless, unless I have the wrong machine.
Counselor DePetro, Counselor DePetro, run 34. This isn't for the machine. This is the electricity, which was your DPW. Yeah, you're just one of them.
I thought Counselor made a skip backwards. I'm skipping forward then, my apologies.
That's okay, you can talk about the other one, when we get to it. It's all good. Okay, so any other questions on the electricity setup? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item 35, vote to appropriate $150,000 from the Sewer Retained Earnings Account to repair the loader used by the wastewater treatment plant unit number 64.
Second.
Now, Counselor DePetro, if you want to talk about the loader?
Again, just very briefly, Madam Chair, this is what was a proposal for a $300,000 brand-new loader. After discussion in Subcommittee, it was decided that, and Heather had recommended both, repair or a brand-new one, I'm sure she would have preferred the brand-new one, but it was decided by Subcommittee to recommend the council that $150,000 be appropriated to repair the existing one. Just so for the record, that is, that is a heck of a savings for the town.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Also?
Thank you.
I want to thank Citizen Member Steve Lazo, who was insistent also on the repair.
Very much so, Madam Chair.
Yes, so shiny new is nice, but $150,000 is, is better, so, saving 150. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item number 36, vote to appropriate $125,000 from Sewer Retained Earnings Account to replacement effluent outfall pipe project.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I think this and several subsequent items were vetted at length during Subcommittee. And this particular one, I don't have any questions on, but I do want, just to make sure people are aware that we aren't just voting on spending or appropriating $125,000, not having gone through quite an extensive, expansive, and detailed process to discuss exactly where this money is going. And subsequently, I would request a roll call vote on the appropriation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePetro?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes. Agenda item 37, ordered that the authorized unissued balances of the following loan orders of the Town Council are hereby rescinded. Now, there are two items here, and we split them up on purpose. Item number one, in the amount of $8,035, the purpose was textbooks, number, account number 6201, and the date of passage was March 7th, 2016. The second item was $471,065, Airport Terminal Building Number 6440, August 24th, 2015. They're split out because there were questions in regard to the textbooks, so these, this is money that is, loans were issued for, and the money you'll see as we go forward, for instance, on the terminal building, is now being used for other items because these projects have not been, have not needed this money, or have not been, have not used this money. We can discuss that further. It was discussed at Subcommittee to separate them out into two votes, so that we can have more information on the textbooks especially. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just have a question for the 2015, this was money that was voted on in 2015 by the Town Council?
Mm-hmm.
So if you weren't a Town Councilor on Council at that time, should you abstain because you did not vote on that, or?
No, what they're, what they're looking to do now is to put it to something else.
Okay, so it's allowed.
So all we're doing is, is taking the unissued loans, balances, we're looking to authorize unissued balances, so.
Okay.
Okay.
That's accurate, that's correct.
Do you want to explain more, is that good enough, or?
I, I think I understand, as long as we, we're not rescinding anything, or taking back any votes, we're just voting to reappropriate them?
We're rescinding, we're rescinding money that wasn't spent.
We're rescinding?
Yeah.
Okay.
So actually, these votes are rescinding authorization. We did not borrow the money, in the case of the textbooks, we transferred it from another capital project that was complete. And then in the case of the Airport Terminal Building, we didn't need to borrow all of that money because of the grants and other transfers that we did on all that, too. So we're not going to reallocate any balance to another account, but we are going to rescind the balance we didn't vote, and I suppose you could say it could be available for another project in the future.
So we're just rescinding the balance?
But it doesn't matter, I, I would say it doesn't matter who voted it initially. This is just the process that we do every year to get the balances or the unissued debt off the books.
I just want to make sure, because I know, like, if I'm not at a meeting, I don't vote on the minutes, I abstain, or if I, if I wasn't here on the council, like, when I first started, I, you know, I, I just abstained, so I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, so this is the decision that we're making now, so we do need the two-thirds, so we would need the majority of the, of the two-thirds of the council to rescind.
And Counselor Manah, for preliminary procedure, a rescind of a vote is not the same as a reconsideration of a vote. A rescind of something, as long as no action has been taken monetarily that will affect anything, you can rescind the action. So in this case, we haven't, we haven't used this money up for anything, so we're not, we, we are authorized to borrow it to take the loan, correct? And you're trying to force to clear that debt that we authorize, otherwise it stays as a liability, or it stays as a?
Well, we just don't need it for this purpose.
Right.
So it's just kind of a house, a housekeeping item.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Steve?
If I can clarify, just, just from my own understanding, if, if I understand you properly, what we're saying here is that these are essentially, we, we basically decide, we basically allocated, created a big envelope saying it was going to be labeled for textbooks, and we put, we said it would be worth six, eight thousand bucks, but there's really no money in it. And in fact, we're just saying, okay, that we're not going to do that with this money, but the money itself doesn't really exist, we just said we're going to set it aside in case we need, in case we were going to use it for that purpose.
Well, let me just explain a little bit, um, more about the textbooks, I did put a memo, hopefully the, the council got it in their packet. What happened with this one is that we, we actually, this was for, I believe it was for $32,000. We borrowed 23,965, and then we transferred 8,000. So we actually did fulfill the, the 32,000, and there's still $8,800 sitting in the account, which the school is reconsidering right now, they, they do want to spend the money.
Right.
I'm not sure if it's going to be on science textbook, so they may come back to the council to ask for it to be repurposed. So because the 8,000 came from another account, then we didn't, we didn't have to borrow it. So all it's saying is we're going to just take the, the rest of the authorization back, but they, the school did get the 32,000.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I just, I, I had said at Subcommittee.
Name and?
Jackie Ryan, 275 Marcy Street. I had gone to the EHS Subcommittee, I had raised a question about the funding amount, repurposing the money, and I said I would contact the receiver and talk with the Town Manager further about that, and I did. I was one of the votes against this, it wasn't actually EHS, it was Jim Goff, excuse me. And I was one of the votes against this, but I let the council know I'm 100% okay with this being revoked, I just wanted to have the receiver, give the receiver more time to respond to the matter, get his thoughts on the matter, and he's perfectly fine with this, as Karen eloquently, much more eloquently stated, so.
Thank you. All right. So we'll take each of them individually and do a two-thirds vote? Okay. So on the first item, as I said, so we had a motion, a second, on item $8,035, textbooks number 6201, date of passage was March 7th, 2016.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
We didn't have it? Oh, when I read the order that the?
Should they both be read separately, Madam Chair?
That's what I basically just, yeah, ordered that the authorization.
She'll second his first.
Okay.
She'll second his first.
Doesn't matter.
She'll second his first. I'll be second fourth.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePetro?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. And then we'll continue on with item two, again, ordered that the authorized unissued balances of the following loan orders of the Town Council are hereby rescinded, item number two, $471,065, Airport Terminal Building Number 6440, issued August 24th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Okay, again, a two-thirds roll call. Any more discussion?
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePetro?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay, motion carries. All done there. Agenda item 38, ordered that $1,135,099 is appropriated to electrical upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant project. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow $1,135,099 under Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's a two-thirds roll call required. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Just, just to comment on this, this is all part of the capital improvement plan, as I think most people realize, we built a six-year capital improvement plan. These are all plans that have been in the works for quite some time, that Heather's been working, as we go through this with the various vendors. It's a well-thought-out plan, as, as, I think this council is very clear, we need to do a lot of upgrades, in particular to the sewer plant, it's getting very, very old. All of these projects are going to be scattered in such a way as that our DPW can handle and manage all these projects, so some will start right away, some will take a little bit longer, but I think it's now set up in a situation our DPW and our vendors can handle it very well. So I'm not going to speak to all of them, but that's what you're going to see, all of these are on the capital management plan. That plan is on the internet for anyone who wants to see it, so you can see that this was thought out, and it is on the actual plan. As we keep reducing these items, next year we'll be taking different items and trying to have a systematic way to take care of the future needs of the town's capital items. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, it's a two-thirds roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePetro?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 39, ordered that $200,000 is appropriated to South Street Pump Station Generator Replacement Project. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow $200,000 under Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So moved. Second.
Again, a two-thirds roll call vote, vote. Question?
Just, just one more comment I didn't make in the last meeting, because I want the public to understand this very clearly. These are not general budget in terms of the borrowing, these are under our sewer enterprise fund, and it is not part of your normal tax bill, but it is going to be part of your sewer bill, but not in the next year's bill, but in future years as we borrow this money to do these projects. So I just want people to understand, it's not part of your regular tax rate, it is going to be part of your sewer bills, but not in the upcoming sewer rate, but in future years. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons? Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 40. Ordered that $300,000 is appropriated to sandblast and paint secondary clarifiers one and two, including repairs to scum arms. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $300,000 under Chapter 44 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes therefor. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So moved.
Second.
Two-thirds roll call vote is required. Discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I guess that I'm happy to just make a comment that I'm very pleased to see items like this come up because of the needs of our wastewater treatment plant that many of us have seen over the years and especially recently. These, these clarifiers are critical to the proper operation and compliance of meeting permit. So this was vetted in committee at length, as have all of these items. And I appreciate the council taking the matter up. Thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 41. Ordered that $500,000 is appropriated to Aeration Tank Coating Project, including engineering and construction. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $500,000 under Chapter 44 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes therefor. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So moved.
Second.
Two-thirds vote is required. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 42. Ordered that $850,000 is appropriated to Dennison Drive Pump Station Replacement. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $850,000 under Chapter 44 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes therefor. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So moved.
Second.
Again, two-thirds roll call vote is required. Any questions on this project? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yep.
Eight yes.
Agenda item 43. Vote to approve the High Lift Pump Rehab Sewer Capital Project and approve a transfer of $75,000 from project number 6355 Airport Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
This is a two-thirds roll call as well. Discussion? Again, all these items were vetted very well with many counselors in the, in the subcommittees. And what they're doing now is appropriating the money from one project that was borrowed. Got that one right this time. And it's now going to something else. So it's not a new borrowing. It's money that we have already, it's already on the books, being borrowed. It just was not needed for the airport sewer project. And it will now be able to do all these other items that we're about to move forward on, the next six items, I believe it is. Okay. Counselor DePietro?
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Unless I'm mistaken, when we do roll calls, isn't it supposed to change order?
Yes. And unfortunately, we don't have roll call sheets today. So if you want to go random and start at the next name, that would be really good, Mary. But yes, generally, that's what happens. I don't think this, these are controversial issues, sometimes that, that's one of the reasons you kind of change it up a bit, so different people vote first at different times. But certainly, if Mary could try to accommodate it, she doesn't have the tallies that normally she has, they were not in the packet, so.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, then, on number 43.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yep.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 44. Vote to approve the INI Evaluation and Repair Sewer Capital Project and approve a transfer of $125,000 from project number 6355 Airport Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Just quickly, I'll take a moment so that anybody that's interested understands what INI is. It's inflow and infiltration, which is groundwater, stormwater-type flows that would enter our collection system and subsequently could overburden, or they do influence dilution of the treatment process at the wastewater treatment plant. So this is absolutely a very wise investment that was vetted at committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item 45. Vote to approve the Headworks Heating and Ventilation System Replacement Sewer Capital Project and approve a transfer of $125,000 from project number 6355 Airport Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Could I please just call out that Headworks is Headworks and not Headwords, as the agenda says? I think we corrected that in committee.
We did.
Okay.
Headworks?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 46. Vote to approve the Shot Pump Station Evaluation Sewer Capital Project and approve a transfer of $35,000 from project number 6355 Airport Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve?
I want to clarify for people who are watching that we're not talking about fixing a pump station that's owned by Shot, it's just named the Shot Pump Station.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. And finally, the last of our roll call votes at this point. Agenda item 47. Vote to, vote the approval of the electrical upgrades at wastewater treatment plant sewer capital project and approve a transfer of $114,901 from project number 6355 Airport Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this one? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Just very briefly, I know this sounds similar to Agenda item 38, and I recall from subcommittee that they're tied together to arrive at a total budget amount for the project of 100, $1.25 million, if I'm not mistaken, when you add those two numbers together. This one here is essentially repurposing the money from the airport sewer project.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for the explanation. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Agenda item 48. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Institute of Form Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $23,500 to repair the leaking sewer main over Katie Burke and Kim Dry.
So moved.
Second.
So you know that we took this matter up last week in a special meeting because it was an emergency sewer leak situation going on there? And this now is the, what we have for the cost at this point going forward, which is less than what we appropriated, $75,000. So hopefully, this will do. And the contract had to get, they had to get it in the queue, get it moving. And I assured the DPW director we would just get it right up here on council because it was so important. Okay? All right. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda item 49. Vote to ratify change order number two from Heart Engineering Company for $64,813 for additional work related to the bio tower project at the wastewater treatment plants.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yep.
Just one comment on this one. If you recall, I believe that this is the one, while the cost of this one up in terms of the design work, at the end of the day, this potentially could save us money in the actual construction of one of those. Is this the right one? Nope. I take that back. A little early in my evaluation.
You're one early. This is for construction-related items on the bio towers that we couldn't foresee. So we had to spend some more money in some steel and some different minor items. But all in all, is what needs to be done to improve our plant. So this is really a good spend of the money. It is not raising, it's still within the budget because we had a high contingency, so.
Sorry, you went early.
You're one early.
Went early, yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda item 50. Vote to ratify change order number one from Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., in the amount of $28,000 for additional engineering work related to Phase Two electrical upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Questions? Information? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Item 51. Vote to approve a transfer of $2,000 from sewer electricity to collection system repairs and maintenance to cover the cost to the end of the year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. 52. Vote to approve a transfer of $35,000 from sewer electricity to treatment plant equipment repair and maintenance to cover costs through the end of the year, it should say, I believe. And that's how I'm reading it, through the end of the year. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. 53. Vote to approve a transfer of $3,500 from sewer electricity to operations to cover costs related to increase of, in O and M contractor for pump station amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve?
Just a quick question. I don't know if you can answer it, Ron, or if Heather needs to. But how much is this going to leave us in the sewer electricity line? I mean, since it's not going to make too much of a difference, we've only got a couple days left in the fiscal year, but.
I mentioned it in subcommittee, but.
I think you did, too. But I don't remember who it was.
This line had, was level funded from the past years from some of the big costs that we had with our solar credit program and our savings that we've had, we actually have excess capacity in this line. We'll be more than able to cover the last month of bills, so.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 54. Review request to transfer $12,500 from sewer electricity to compost amendment to cover costs related to an increase in sludge production this year and make, production this year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. You all set?
Yeah.
All in favor? And. Wow. Okay, we've turned the page. Item 55. Last official agenda item. Vote to accept the proposed bylaw as attached and read, which we will do, to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, and officers in the town. I'm going to point out that it is not vote to accept. It is the first reading of the proposed bylaw as attached to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or other offices in the town. So we have the bylaw here. And it is four pages. So I'll read a couple paragraphs, and if somebody wants to take over, I'd be happy to allow you to do that and to share in the reading, actually, to say aloud. Share in the reading, it'd be great. "A bylaw to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in the town of Southbridge. Whereas the town of Southbridge believes that the town should adopt a bylaw to authorize guide, to authorize and guide the use of departmental revolving funds pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. And whereas the town of Southbridge believes that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Southbridge to adopt and formalize the use of town funds for town purposes. And whereas the town of Southbridge believes that the adoption of this proposed bylaw will best achieve these purposes. Now therefore, the town of Southbridge, acting by and through the town council pursuant to the power vested in it by Chapter 2, Section 4-1, and Chapter 2, Section 6 of the Southbridge six of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter hereby known as Charter, hereby takes the following action. Upon motion made, seconded, and duly passed, the Town Council of the Town of Southbridge, in the exercise of power conferred on it by Section eight of Article...
eighty-nine.
Okay. Eighty-nine. L X X X I X. Eighty-nine. Of the amendments to the state constitution, and by its own Home Rule Charter, does hereby adopt and enact the following addition to the Code of Bylaws, Town of Southbridge Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be indexed as Chapter eleven, Section one hundred, through Section five oh five point six point five, to be known as departmental revolving funds, and which is set out in its entirety as follows." Next.
Chapter eleven, Departmental Revolving Funds. Section eleven dash one hundred. Purpose: This bylaw establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in connection with the operations of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of those programs or activities. These revolving funds are established under and governed by General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. Section eleven dash two hundred. Expenditures Limitations: A department or agency head, board, committee, or officer may incur liabilities against and spend monies from a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw without appropriation subject to the following limitations. A. Fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund, except for those employed as school bus drivers. No liability shall be incurred in excess of available balance of the fund. C. Total amount spent during a fiscal year shall not exceed the amount authorized by Town Council on or before July first of that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during that fiscal year by the council. Section eleven dash three hundred. Interest earned on monies credited to a revolving fund established by this bylaw shall be credited to the general fund. Section eleven dash four hundred. Procedures and reports, except as provided in the General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, and this bylaw, the laws, charter provisions, bylaws, ordinances, rules, regulations, policies, or procedures that govern the receipt and custody of town monies and the expenditure and payment of the town funds shall apply to the use of a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw. The town accountant shall include a statement of the collections credited to each fund, the encumbrances and expenditures charged to the fund, and the balance available for the expenditure in the regular report the town accountant provides to the department, board, committee, agency, or officer on appropriations made for its use.
Counselor Manna?
Section eleven dash five hundred. Authorized Revolving Funds. Section eleven dash five hundred point one. Lease Properties Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred point one point one. Fund Name: There shall be a separate fund called the Lease Properties Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Community Services Department. Section eleven dash five hundred point one point two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Lease Properties Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the lease and other revenue charged and received by the Community Services Department in connection with the lease of town-owned properties, except for the airport. Section eleven dash five hundred point one point three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the Community Services Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Lease Properties Revolving Fund for repairs, improvements, utilities, and other expenses for all town-owned properties, except for the airport. Section eleven dash five hundred point one point four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven dash five hundred point one point five. Fiscal Years: The Lease Properties Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, two thousand and eighteen. Section eleven dash five hundred point two. Southbridge Airport Lease Properties Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred point two point one. Fund Name: There shall be a separate fund called the Southbridge Airport Lease Properties Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Airport Commission. Section eleven dash five hundred point two point two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Southbridge Airport Lease Properties Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all the lease and other revenue charged and received by the Airport Commission in connection with the airport. Section eleven dash five hundred point two point three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the Airport Commission may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Southbridge Airport Lease Revolving Fund for repairs, improvements, utilities, and other expenses in connection with the airport. Section eleven dash five hundred point two point four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven five hundred point two point five. Fiscal Years: The Lease Properties Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, two thousand and eighteen.
Counselor Nash?
Section eleven dash five hundred point three. Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred point three point one. Fund Name: There shall be a separate fund called the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Health Department. Section eleven dash five hundred point three point two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the fees from lost toters received by the Health Department in connection with the Toter program. Section eleven dash five hundred point three point three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the Health Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund for replacement of toters in connection with the Toter program. Section eleven dash five hundred point three point four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven dash five hundred point three point five. Fiscal Years: The Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, two thousand and eighteen. Section eleven dash five hundred point four. Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred point four point one. Fund Name: There shall be a separate fund called the Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Health Department. Section eleven dash five hundred point four point two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the revenue recaptured by the Health Department in connection with the demolition of buildings program. Section eleven dash five hundred point four point three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the Health Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund for expenses associated with the demolition of buildings. Section eleven dash five hundred point four point four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven dash five hundred point four point five. Fiscal Years: The Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July one, two thousand and eighteen.
Would anyone want to say? Kristin, would you like to? Counselor O'Clair, excuse me.
I can do so. Thanks. Section eleven dash five hundred dot five. Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred point five point one. Fund Name: There should be a separate fund called the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund authorized for use by the town manager. Section eleven dash five hundred dot five dot two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the revenues from fines in violation of Mass General Law Chapters one forty-eight eight and Chapter one fifteen of the Acts of two thousand and nine received in connection with the program. Section eleven dash five hundred dot five dot three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the town manager may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund for expenses associated with the administration and collection of fines in violation of Mass General Law Chapter one forty-eight eight and Chapter one fifteen of the Acts of two thousand and nine. Section eleven dash five hundred dot five dot four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven dash five hundred point five point five. Fiscal Years: The Demolition of Buildings Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, two thousand and eighteen.
I think we got one.
Section eleven dash five hundred dot six. Southbridge Middle High School School Revolving Fund. Section eleven dash five hundred dot six dot one. Fund Name: There shall be a separate fund called the Southbridge Middle High School Store Revolving Fund authorized for the use by the school business manager. Section eleven dash five hundred dot six dot two. Revenues: The town accountant shall establish the Southbridge Middle High School School Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to all fund of the sales and all the revenues received by the school business manager in connection with the school store program. Section eleven dash five hundred dot six dot three. Purpose and expenditures: During each fiscal year, the school business manager may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Southbridge Middle High School Store Revolving Fund for expenses associated with the school store operations. Section eleven dash five hundred dot six dot four. Other Requirements Reports: None. Section eleven dash five hundred dot six dot five. Fiscal Years: The Middle High School Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, two thousand and eighteen. The provision of these sections are effective immediately upon affirmation of the vote of the Town Council. All bylaws or parts of the bylaws inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed date that's when it will be approved and per order of the town of Southbridge approved as to form and legality both will be signed by our town manager and our town attorney.
Thank you. Just want to thank everyone who read. That is the first reading, and you probably wondered why we're even doing this. The departmental revolving funds are something that we have that are ongoing, and there is a change amendment that took place that requires the towns to have these revolving funds to be as bylaws, although we will still have to, or council still will have to vote for the amount of monies that are allowed to be expended out of those funds on a yearly basis. We do have to have revolving funds in place as an actual bylaw. So, with the language that was provided, the model ordinance language, Ms. Harnoy put together this document and put in what exists already as revolving funds. So, the lease funds, the total maintenance, the demolition, those are all revolving funds as you here are aware of, that we vote on every year anyway, and you will still vote for the funds, but the actual revolving fund will exist as a bylaw. I do want to point out that in this first reading, on the very first page, when we commented on, let's see here, just want to make sure it was the "upon motion made," there was a number. It said, "to be indexed as Chapter eleven, Section one hundred, through Section..." It had said five oh five point six point five in our document. It should be Section five hundred point six point five. So, I just want a correction on that. I would recommend if councilors can keep it for the next meeting when you read it again, that way you've got your document and you don't have to kill another tree or forest, but just my thoughts. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Just want to comment on revolving funds. For all those people that are watching and don't really understand what revolving funds are, we have general budget revenue through taxation that comes in, and that funds our general town budget. A revolving fund is a concept where, let's say, the toters, there's some fees paid by residents, it goes into a special fund, and then it's used again for that purpose. So, it's a dedicated source of funds for a specific dedicated purpose. That's generally the reason for revolving fund. So, a school revolving fund at the school store, the money raised by the school store goes directly back into the school store, just to give you an idea of what revolving funds mean.
So, again, Counselor Nash? Oh, no, I was going to say, first reading, you'll need two more readings before you then will take a vote to accept the proposed bylaw. So, we'll make sure that, you can make sure that that's correct. Counselor Nash, first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just wanted to make sure you had that opportunity and not lose your train of thought. But my question is actually related to Section eleven dash five hundred point one, and while I was there and participated in subcommittee, I don't recall this being noticed, but it refers to the Community Services Department, so I assume this is just standard language, but how does that apply to the town of Southbridge? We don't have a Community Services Department.
That's a good question.
Again, eleven dash five hundred.
Just what specific section again?
Eleven dash five hundred. Authorized Revolving Funds under Lease Properties Revolving Fund. It refers to Community Services Department several times.
By the Community Services. Would that be like the, because it's the, are we talking airport?
Under Mike Trombley, who's the Community Services Director slash Veterans, he wears several different hats, so that's just what I called it within the bylaw. I wasn't sure what label to give it, actually.
So, his, if I may, just, so he's Community Services? I thought it was Community Center Director. I didn't think he was Community Services. Maybe that's my error.
Well, Community Services Department, so I can understand the concept because that's...
Right, because that's the building that's being leased, and that's where the revenue is being generated from. I think we call it Community Services slash Veterans and slash, I don't know if there's another title there, but, I mean, you're right, we don't have an official Community Services Department, but we had to give it a label, so I thought that that was a fair way to...
I'm satisfied. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
So, specifically that particular building, like we have the airport also, the airport revolving fund is for the lease...
Right, because it wouldn't fall under Recreation or anything like that. It's very specific to that building, the former Armory, which is the community center.
Right, right. And Community Services seems to cover a broadband of what is done there, so Recreation, everything is all community service in some way.
Right.
Whatever you decided was the best plan of attack on this. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Manna?
Just one real quick question. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. After our third reading, and we're going to vote to adopt this, is there a two-thirds vote required on the bylaw, or is that just...
The bylaw says majority.
Okay, majority, okay. Thank you.
I know it's tucked into the bylaw somewhere where it says that, but in our bylaws. Okay. Any other questions on what we just did? Okay. And we are now at Agenda Item fifty-six, Counselors Forum, and I'll point out, we had fifty-six items. It's only eight forty-five almost, and, thank you, moving right along. So, let's start with Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I don't really have much this week. I wanted to thank everyone again, if I hadn't already, for coming out on the twelfth to vote. I'm excited to be up here for the next three years, and thank you very much to Counselor Clements, Chairwoman Clements, for all of your service over the past nine years, and everything that you do for this community, you know, not only just with the Town Counselor hat, but all of the other various hats that you wear as well. And thank you to Counselor Carrasco. You know, I will say that during our time together, serving on the council, you know, we don't agree a hundred percent of the time, but you're always very respectful, and I've really felt that, you know, over my tenure on the council, that you've helped me to become a better counselor, so thank you for that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just want to, first, I want to thank God for the opportunity that he's given me to serve my community. I want to thank my wife, my children, my church family, my friends, because truly, I think Counselor Clements said it best when she was talking earlier in regards to the times, the meetings, the missed things that go with the duty of serving your community that you love. And I've had the privilege of serving the town of Southbridge for five years, and my daughters are eight years old, so I've missed a lot of, at least five years of some of their things, but I am so glad for the opportunity that I've had to serve this community. The citizens of Southbridge, it's a great place. I love my community. It's something that, it's been an honor, a privilege. Regardless of what happened on June twelfth, I leave here truly honored, truly satisfied, and truly I leave here with my head on high because I have done everything I could to serve this community with integrity, with respect, and with honor. And I just, I want to thank the community of Southbridge for this opportunity they've given me. I thank my son and my daughter Jalisa, who are here with me tonight. They were here with me five years ago when I got sworn in, and they said, "Dad, I can't miss your last meeting." So, I just, I want to thank them for coming out. But again, it's been a privilege, it's been an honor. It's been something that I just will never take for granted. I've learned a lot, and it's been a privilege to work with department heads. Thank you for the work you do for our community. Thank you to Mr. San Angelo for his work, for his dedication to the new, three new elected councilors. Good luck. Have fun while you're doing it, and again, keep it respectful. That's all I got to say.
Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I would also like to take a second and thank you for your service to our community. It's been a great year for me personally. I've learned so much from you this year. It's been great to serve our community together. I hope it goes well with your family from now on. I'll see you next year. Enjoy your time also to Counselor Carrasco. Thank you for your service as well to our community, and I hope that it goes well, and you enjoy your family, your time, your church, and that you use your time wisely and enjoy. Thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I guess I'll start with my thanks and my sincere gratitude first to Counselor Clements for her many years of dedication and commitment to this community. On top of serving the Town Council, I know her involvement is extensive and expansive, and I'm really grateful to have seen that it was recognized tonight. Thank you very much. Likewise, Counselor Carrasco, I just choose to recognize each of you individually as well. Counselor Carrasco, I think I first met you up here on the dais during the Candidates' Night back in two thousand and thirteen, and I was thoroughly impressed. I got to know you a lot over the years as well, and I'm very grateful for the contributions you've made to the town of Southbridge in your service as a member of the Town Council, but in other capacities as well. I wish you both lots of luck and much happiness going forward, and I have learned a lot from working with you over the years when I was a citizen member on subcommittee and then subsequently this past year, so thank you for that. Now, to be a buzzkill, I did hear from folks today, and I know that there are memos out there and Facebook posts, but please do be aware that the circumstance that you might be aware of with the drinking water has been addressed by Whitewater. The town manager can speculate on that, but please feel free to call the Water Department or the DPW or the Town Manager's Office if you have concerns. What's more, I will congratulate Counselor O'Clair on her reelection, and likewise to the three new councilors, looking forward to working with you going forward. Thanks ever so much for the moves tonight on appropriating or authorizing debt for the work that we need to do with the wastewater treatment plant and the pump stations and within the collection system. I'm so glad to see that's taking shape. With that, thank you all very much. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just a couple things. Thank you, Counselor Carrasco. It's been a pleasure serving with you these last five years. We don't always disagree, I mean, agree. We do disagree, but it's, you know, we're not always, always supposed to agree on anything, so thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with you. We ran together in two thousand and thirteen, then you ran for the vacancy, and it certainly has been a pleasure, and I hope you get to enjoy the time spent with your family and whatnot. Counselor Clements, thank you for your nine years of service. Thank you for being like a mentor to me. I've known you my whole life, you know, with the exception when I was gone to Ohio for like ten years. But these last nine years have been very inspiring. You've taught me a lot. We don't always agree on things. Sometimes you crack that whip a little too hard, and I just have to take a step back and so on. But it's okay, because you get the job done, you know, and what you set out to do, you accomplish, and that's seen with the fundraising efforts, the Southbridge Holiday Visions, everything. So, thank you. Thank you very much. And I also would like to congratulate you on your Anson Harrowan Award presented to you last week, I believe, it was by the state. You were recognized for all your years of hard service, your volunteerism. That's something you should be very, very proud of, and I'm very proud that you received that, so thank you very much. And your expertise up here is going to be missed, so I will be calling you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Huge thanks to Counselor Carrasco for all your service. It's been a pleasure, sometimes a challenge, working with you, but enjoyed it both ways. You've opened my mind to a lot of different issues, and I've learned from you, as I will have from most of the senior councilors here. Congratulations to all our new councilors incoming. I look forward to working with you. And to the chair, thank you so much for putting Counselor Manna ahead of me, because I was afraid to get the gavel thrown at me as tight-lipped as you've been about that award. Extremely prestigious, I understand there's only a handful, maybe eight, in the whole state?
Oh, no, there's more. There's more than eight.
A few more.
But I'm honored to...
But I know you're very humble about it, and again, it's a huge, huge, huge badge on your chest there. You should be very proud, and I thank you for all your service and pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Steve's, Vice Chair Steve's, let me get that right.
That's okay.
Vice Chair Steve's.
I don't worry about formalities. First of all, I want to say thank you to Counselor Carrasco. We have very rarely agreed on most issues, but I want to thank you for your service, and I wish you well in whatever you choose to do going forward. Good luck with that. Counselor Clements, I've already said thank you to you, although I did want to throw in one thing that earlier discussion made me think of, is that I think it's interesting that you have, you seem to have the spectrum of doing everything from a golf court, from dealing with golf courses to dealing with picking up trash, and it's a rather wide spectrum of interests, let's put it that way. Well-rounded, yes. And also wanted to, and also again to say thank you to, and thank you to Counselor O'Clair for your service, and good luck. Hopefully, the next couple of years will be, will continue to be functional and productive, and all the people who are coming in for the next couple of years. I want to announce a couple of events coming up in the near future. Tomorrow, for those of you who are interested, at ten a.m. at Worcester Public Library, there's a kickoff event from the Worcester Community Action Council for a program called the Bank on Worcester County Program, which is specifically targeting Worcester and Southbridge to help people who, if I remember, I don't have the details in front of me, but if I remember correctly, it's to help people who have an issue with getting money from banks and bank loans to get them, so that they can make it easier for them to get money to help their lives. So, I thought that might be interesting to, I'm planning on going to that as a reporter, sort of double-dutying that one as a reporter and counselor. Also, let's see, obviously, if you missed it on the twenty-fourth, the Council on the Common started with Reminiscence. Unfortunately, I couldn't go. But this July first is the second one with Los Sugar Kings, which is a Cuban band, and very ever-popular Joy Co. is July eighth, which is their jazz-pop combo of stuff. And the long list of people going forward, they're always six to eight p.m. at the Common, so you can check the website for the actual list of who's performing and when. And, what else did I want to say? Oh, yeah, and on July fourth is the sixty-ninth running of the BFW Road Race, starting at nine a.m. on, starting at the Southbridge YMCA. And that's it for that. The next council meeting date is scheduled to be July ninth at seven p.m. here in the chambers.
And I just make a note that on our schedule, on our agenda, it had said Thursday, which was... On our agenda, it had said Thursday, which was a typo, so July ninth is the correct date. And if I might say one thing to your comment, Counselor Steves, and that would be that you never ask anyone to do anything you wouldn't do yourself.
I agree.
And having said that, after nine years of being here on council, I'm asking every one of you out there to think about taking your stand up here, too, for your community, because I would never ask you to do anything I wouldn't do, and so on that.
Absolutely. Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, it's unanimous. We are adjourned.